Hey, John.
All right. I want to welcome everyone to tonight's
Cedar Rapids Community School District Board of Education meeting. It's Monday, September 11th, 2017. So, welcome, everyone. And with that, we call the meeting to order. Somebody like to read the approval of the agenda?
I move the agenda of Monday, September 11th, 2017. Board of Education meeting be approved as set forth, and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Is there a second? Okay. And this is a roll call vote.
Director Jacobo.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Meisterling.
Aye.
Director Westercamp.
Aye.
Director Anhalt.
Aye.
President Laberty.
Aye. That will turn it over to you, Dr. Buck, for the superintendent's report.
All right. Good evening. Thank you. So, the first day of early learning preschool was on September 5th, and I'm pleased to share with you that the enrollment has grown by approximately 100 students this year. So, the Early Learning Preschool Program supports 3- and 4-year-olds with a developmentally appropriate curriculum that promotes cognitive language and physical, social, and emotional growth. Approximately 900 students are enrolled in our school district's preschool program this year. Numerous schools in our district have taken significant action to offer financial aid and supplies to those impacted by Hurricane Harvey. Taft Middle School is one of many examples. Students at Taft donated gently-used books, coloring books, crayons, and colored pencils to be sent to Houston for kids in shelters. The items were taken to JMS Transportation, which delivered the donations along with other items collected from the community to Houston last week. On Friday, Iowa Big was featured in a one-hour special produced by XQ Super Schools, which aired on all four major networks. A viewing party to watch the special, which highlighted several schools around the country, was held at the Geonetic Building in Newbo and was open to the public. We're proud to offer Iowa Big as one of the many innovative academic options available to our students, and if you have a chance to go watch it, it's at about minute 48 where Cedar Rapids Schools and Lynn Mar and College are highlighted. So, it's a really cool thing, and Samuel Jackson's on there and Justin Timberlake.
But you'll miss Justin Bieber if you
Well, you'll miss Justin Timberlake.
Or Timberlake. Timberlake, that's right. One of those guys.
Who is one. Yeah. Timberlake's one of my favorites. Bieber would not necessarily be on that same list. So, sorry. That's a personal preference thing. Washington High School students in Carrie Tinkham's language arts classroom were immersed in a project-based learning when they teamed up with the city's traffic engineering division to make safety improvements to the intersection of Cottage Grove and Forest Drive Southeast. The students conducted research on traffic control devices and met as a group with members of the city's traffic engineering division to identify improvement options that were cost-effective and beneficial for the area, which sees high pedestrian traffic from the school as well as the surrounding neighborhood. The newly painted crosswalk is the culmination of the efforts by these students to work with the city to improve their neighborhood and community. So, congratulations, those students at Washington High School.
Terrific. Thank you, Dr. Buck. With that, are there any board reports tonight? I have just a little bit of information I want to share with the public. So, regarding the board's public comment period during our meetings, this is following the Gazette's Opinion editorial on August 27th. We had one request by a member of the public to change our public comment format to allow for dialogue and debate. Based on Iowa code, which I think most of our board members are aware, our board policy related to public comments is spelled out in Regulation 202.11. In follow-up with our board legal counsel, they have told us the following. There is nothing in the law that requires a board to provide a public comment period. The reason why a public comment period is offered is to provide an opportunity for the public to make comments to the board. Note that making comments is a one-way communication, not a dialogue or a debate. It is a common misperception in the public that a public comment period is where individuals can come to get their issues addressed. This is not the case. The public comment period is where individuals can come to make their concerns known. The law, Iowa Code Section 21.4, requires that the board post a tentative agenda of the meeting 24 hours in advance of the meeting, and that the board's business will follow the posted agenda. Therefore, the board should be following its agenda and not engage in debate on topics that are not on the board's published agenda. We believe the best practice, as our board policy recommends, is to start conversations of concerns or suggestions at the point of most direct contact related to that topic. Often during public comments, we refer the concern via the superintendent to the appropriate administrator or staff member for follow-up. There are multiple ways to communicate with board members outside of these meetings. Messages by U.S. Mail, email, and phone calls to us are all options. Periodically, a small number of board members have had listening posts at coffee shops, as an example. Board members have also had numerous individual meetings over coffee with constituents with specific ideas or concerns. We also are aware that Dr. Buck and his administrators, many of them who are here, are very open to meeting with district stakeholders. Based on the desire of an individual to have the board get into discussions or debates about public comments at these meetings would put us at risk with Iowa law, board legal advice, and the best practice recommendations from school board professional associations. We, as a board, we are a board that listens. It wasn't too long ago that a member of the public asked to go from three minutes to five minutes during public comment, and we agreed. And it was suggested the board meetings start after 5:00 p.m., so more working people in the community could attend, and we agreed and changed our meetings to start at 5:30. We also record all of our meetings and post that video on our website along with agendas and minutes from all of our meetings. We also post all financial transactions on our website. We are truly working to be transparent as possible. I just wanted to put that out there to make sure that it's clear from the board's perspective, from our policy, and from our legal counsel, how we view the public comment period during our public meetings. So, with that, we'll go ahead and move on to communications, delegations, and petitions. We have one request to speak for us tonight, and Lawrence Wenkowsky, you're very familiar with the process, so welcome, and let you take the podium, and Laurel Day will keep track of the five minutes for your remarks.
Lawrence Wenkowsky, 4234, Morel Road, Northeast, Cedar Rapids. First thing, I wasn't going to do this, but I'll make a comment based on something you just said, John, about changing the time of the meetings. If I recall correctly, meetings used to start at, like, 6:00 or 6:30 at one point, and then we went back to 5:00, and then we added 5:30. So, you know, it's not just that it's always been at 5:00 or 5:30. There was a time that they were later in that, and it was a time when we had, I think, board meetings four times a week. But, anyway, the reason I've come here is, I believe, to our policy, I have the right to request to be put on the agenda, and I would like to, at the next meeting, I would like to be put on the agenda to talk about public comment, our meetings, and to have a dialogue on how we can improve them, because while I truly respect our legal counsel, and I know one of them personally, and they are a great attorney in it, they also take a very conservative viewpoint in it. They're sort of here as to don't do anything that could potentially get you in trouble. And that I truly respect, but there's also compromise and other alternative solutions to problems other than having a conversation between each other. First of all, I know for fact not all board members agree with that policy. In public, yous agree, and in public, yous totally, almost agree on every decision here, but, you know, when you talk to some people privately about different things, they take a slightly different viewpoint. And, you know, that's why I think we need to have these conversations. The other thing is, I guess, you know, one of my goals is not to criticize people with a conversation in it, but it's to possibly change some procedures within meetings, because there's a few things that we don't do, I don't believe, that are done correctly. I think the policy should reflect truly what's going to happen in a meeting, and we shouldn't have anything in a policy that, under no circumstances, are we ever going to acknowledge. And if, you know, one of the things is that people can request to be put on the agenda, and it's totally up to the president, well, a school board president, well, that sort of defeats having the, as part of the policy, if it never happens. And I think I've requested a couple times in the past to address this, but it's always been through communicate, through an email or that. You know, the other thing is, as part of this, I'd like to talk about how the board members and some administrators, you know, some of the administration can make their communication easier. There's a few things yous can do with your email to help you, so you're not, like, responding or ignoring emails. What's one other thing here? Oh, yeah. Has to do with going forward with our proposed possible changes to the long-term planning of the, within the district. I don't want board meetings and procedures and stuff like that to be a distraction of what needs to be, what's going to take place. You know, if people have questions, we need processes in place, so all these things are answered, and answered publicly, not one-on-one, because these are, you know, if someone asks a question regarding the closing of a school or whatever, and I'm not saying we're closing schools, but if that was the case, people, it's not just going to affect one person, it's going to affect all the people in that school. So, that's why I'd like to do this, and bring the legal counsel here. I'd be happy to engage them, too. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wenkowsky. We appreciate your comments. All right. Moving on, next is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve, or I guess we need to, are there any comments, or any comments, or, yeah, Mary?
BA 18084 and BA 18085, abstain from that vote.
Very good. Any other items that board members would like polled for questions or further discussion? All right. Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as written minus BA 18084 and BA 18085?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great. And this is a roll call vote.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Meisterling.
Aye.
Director Westercamp.
Aye.
Director Anhalt.
Aye.
Director Jacobo.
Aye.
President Laberty.
Aye. We'll have a vote together on BA 18084 and BA 18085 regarding the Grantwood AEA director district number four and number eight. So, we'll do this again as a roll call?
Be fine.
All right. So, this will be a roll call vote as well.
Director Meisterling.
Director Westercamp.
Aye.
Director Anhalt.
Aye.
Director Jacobo.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
President Laberty.
Aye. Thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to learning and leadership with an overview of the School Improvement Advisory Board Committee and the annual progress report, and Noreen Bush and Carla Reese will turn it over to you two.
Thank you. Good evening. Noreen and I are here tonight. We're going to provide an overview of CYAC, our School Improvement Advisory Committee, a little bit on the data that CYAC looks at, which is encompassed in our annual progress report, and kind of tell you where we're headed with that committee as we move forward into 1718. So, I'd like to start with a picture. This picture, we think, is pretty awesome. It was taken here. It was, these are Office of Learning and Leadership teacher leaders and administrators, all sporting our shirts that we received at the opening day kickoff, kind of as we worked through the morning to figure out the best ways that we're going to support students and teachers throughout the school year. So, we all had our shirts on, and we're working hard. So, I thought that was, we thought that was a pretty fitting way to start, start our conversation, because that is the work of CYAC. That is the work of everything that we do, is to support the students and the teachers in our district. So, and so, there's a little bit about what CYAC is, or what the School Improvement Advisory Committee is. It's a state-mandated, board-appointed committee, and its work centers around a review of school district data, a variety of different data points, and its focus is to provide recommendations to the school board to help you do your work and make decisions that are more informed. So, that team really digs deeply into data, and as a district, we see that team as a partner with helping us determine our, what our major educational needs, what's our long-range strategic planning need to look like, what do we, how do we need to set student goals, and what do those student goals need to be set around? So, that's kind of the, like, what CYAC is. And then, a little bit about the history of, oh, sorry, a little bit about the history of CYAC, too. Over the last few years, CYAC has spent a lot of time, or kind of centered around giving feedback regarding some of our innovation work. Some of the recommendations that have come out of CYAC over the past, I would say, three or four years was suggestions are launching programs such as our magnet schools. And we met again last spring, and one of the items that came up last spring was focused around some structural suggestions, ways to maximize the learning day for our kids. And so, we're going to kind of dig into that as we move forward into 1718 as well. Some of the pieces of data that CYAC has looked at centers around our annual progress report. So, our historical Iowa assessment data there in reading is at, in 2014, 15, is at 73%, 72, and 70 across the board. Those are grades 3 through 11 collapsed together, and we're looking at the percent of students proficient and advanced combined in that. For math, we were at 73%, 71%, and 69% as well. So, we kind of hover around that 3/4% proficient and advanced combined together. Science was 73%, 72%, and 72%, and our graduation rate there was 83.9, so that is correct. So, some of what the work CYAC needs to do is dig deeply into this data, and what you were provided in your packet is, there's a significant level of detail, and CYAC will work into that level of detail as we move forward into 1718. And kind of, what's the current status, and how can we make recommendations to move our district forward? So, I'm going to go ahead, and we're going to talk a little bit about the future.
Thank you. Thanks, Carla.
Yep.
So, where we are, if you'll look at the screen in front of you, I am going to, the next few slides also allude to our strategic plan draft, which will hopefully drive all of our work with the School Improvement Advisory Committee. I love the opportunity to have stakeholders, multiple stakeholders from our entire community giving us input on how to improve all learning environments for all students, and that really will be the focus of our work with CYAC. In the past, CYAC has met maybe once or twice. We're going to meet three times this year, so that we really can, similar to the process we used last month with you all with the strategic plan, kind of get feedback and come back to it together, and get feedback and come back to it together, so that the end of the year, we can bring a recommendation to you all from the work from CYAC. So, we are currently going to be using some of the data that Carla just highlighted, our APR data, as well as some other pieces of data as well, and we really want to zoom in on our student learning perspective. So, we'll also have students participating on our CYAC team this year from all of our area high schools. As we look at the improvement efforts, our hope is to launch and honor where we've been, but to launch work around our district strategic plan. So, to, just to refamiliarize ourselves from where we've been to where we're going, the three designated columns on the screen, again, highlight the work that we've done for the strategic plan. So, we have our six core beliefs, which of course came from our theory of action work, our focus areas, which are our five bold action step areas, as well as our metrics that we want to use to drive the work. The metrics that we'll be looking at initially with CYAC is our district-wide data that we've had from the past, but what we'll zoom in on are the metrics around the district strategic plan as well, so we can dig deeper around two major areas. So, if we look at the focus areas in the middle column, we really want to get CYAC's input from intercultural mindset and, of course, student learning. So, this will be the process, and I think about this as process and product. So, the first part of the slide's about our process, and that is the content for our CYAC work. Again, we'll focus on those two major areas, one being future-ready learning, the other being future-ready intercultural mindset. And so, our hope is, as Mary Ellen Mosk described in our last meeting, those competencies that we're trying to develop as a district, we have an initial draft, but we would like to get input from our community to understand the competencies that our entire community is looking for, for a future-ready graduate of Cedar Rapids Community School District. So, they'll be providing input on those competencies. And then, secondly, around intercultural mindset, we'd like to understand our data and our goals. We've done some work with what's called IDI, the Intercultural Development Inventory. We've done a lot of work with that, with our leaders, and we have three pilot schools working with that particular research-based tool this year, and we want to use CYAC as another input community to understand the development of intercultural mindset, and not only as a school district, but as a community. Secondly, the product that we'll have after these three meetings will be a recommendation to you as a board, and we really hope that we will have profile of a graduate competencies that we can develop as a district as part of that profile of a graduate and graduation expectations as we move forward on our strategic plan, and then gaining feedback on the district-wide data as well. So, we'll start with APR, and at the end of the year, we probably won't have all of our APR data yet, but we'll have the data from our strategic plan, so that CYAC can make a solid recommendation to the board on the directions that we hope to move as a community. And that is it for us, so we would gladly take questions from the board for the direction of CYAC.
Yuri?
I just want to clarify, Noreen, I think you, you did a good job of doing that at the end, but beginning, I was a little confused. It looked like the CYAC committee was just the learning and leadership, and maybe that's just the advisory committee to it, but the CYAC committee is basically our connection and our vehicle for feedback from the community, and not only feedback, but the opportunity for the community to look at our district and, and say, this is the direction we believe you should be going.
Absolutely. And so, just for example, one of the recommendations from CYAC last year around considering what a structure of a day looks like, we would, we will probably be gathering all sorts of information from CYAC, but hopefully, all of it will be encompassed towards our vision, where we're headed as a district, and the ways in which we hope to accomplish that. And then, we might get into, I'd say, more nuts and bolts things, too, of means to the way that CYAC, from a community point of view, might recommend that we take a look at the school day, for example, for all learners. And so, I'm sure that there will be other things generated through CYAC as well, but we really hope to keep their input on our strategic plan this year, since it's new.
Since you brought it up, I'm sure you're aware that, I believe, the Des Moines schools flipped their elementary and high school starting times this year. Just might be, if you're looking at overall some of those things, it might be a place to go to see how it worked, or bumps, or whatever in the road.
Yeah, absolutely, and I think they did that based on input from their strategic plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
Director Anhalt, are you also, is this question also about the composition of the group? So, it's community members, it's
It'll be
Right, right. Ashley, who?
Sure.
I don't know how overt we've been to define who's
I think Kristen's actually our board-appointed person for the CYAC committee as well, right? And I know she isn't here, otherwise she'd probably share.
Yes.
I took that picture in the public book, and all that's just, that's just district personnel. That was my
Sure. So, the theme of our year this year is the power of we, and that's one group, is the OLL, Teacher Leadership Group, of being the power of we, but the power of we extends farther, much farther beyond the district employees. So, this does include parents and community partners, as well as students, and, as well as some district personnel as well, but it's a, it's a broadcast group, and we're hoping to enlarge it a little bit this year, but we'll be bringing that board-recommended list of membership to the next board meeting. That's on Laurel Day's agenda for next time, as we have folks who said that they can't do it this year, and other folks that we're trying to recruit. So, we'll bring that membership list next time.
That's good. I was just looking at it online here and saw some outdated names.
Yes.
I knew we did it once a year, but
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah.
But other questions, this is also a time that we can ask about the progress
Yeah.
The annual progress report, so if there's any questions about any of that. Keith?
Well, I have a question about the mathematics from 73% in 2014 to 69% in 2016, during a time period where we've got a new mathematics program. We're supposed to be going up, and we're going down. Is it statistically significant that that has occurred?
Well, these, this is third through 11th combined. So, our new math came at the middle school level, would have come in the 14, 15 school year, would have been the first year of implementation of that. So, I don't know how correlated those two pieces of information are. It is possible we had a slight implementation dip as we implemented new materials, 6 through 8, but that, we would need to dig into, break that out by grade level and subgroup and that sort of thing, I think, before we would want to say it's correlated or not correlated.
But we have these amazing new data analytics people that
Yes, we do.
I know that they, they have been, they've been doing that sort of work. So, there's an ability now
There is an ability.
Within the district to be able to look at that type of data and say
Yes.
There is a real correlation here, and maybe it's causational because of da-da-da-da-da.
There is an ability for us to dig much deeper into data than we have been able to do so in the past.
Yeah. So, and one other important item to keep in mind, the Iowa assessments are not aligned to the Iowa Core. So, the longer we teach the Iowa Core, the less information we actually have about what's really happening with the data set with our kids in any of these content areas. So, and please don't hear this as an excuse, I don't like that they're trending in that direction, and at the same time, this test is not aligned to what expected, what the state expects kids to know and be able to do. So, you have this weird juxtaposition in the data set right now, where you're providing a test that's not aligned to what's expected to, kids are expected to know and be able to do. So, when you try to draw assertions out of what's happening in your data set, it's difficult to know what's really happening in your data set. And so, I especially appreciate President Laberty's comment about, the better we get at being sophisticated about understanding our data sets, we can start to pull in district-level data, district assessments that we know are aligned to the Core, and how are kids doing on those. We can start to also bring in other factors that'll be a part of ESSA related to factors beyond the classroom and a variety of other things. So, I, I'm, I don't like where the trend is in this data set. I'm concerned about the persistent gaps that exist in this data set, and regardless, excuse me, regardless of the assessment, those gaps persist. So, we have work to do around those gaps, regardless of the assessment that's in front of the kids. And, and so, now I got a, I didn't mean to get this far into it, but I just tried to add a little sort of rounding out of it. We also have work to do as it relates to socio-emotional behavior data sets, and, and we're interested in that work as well, and that's not necessarily overt in the APR. So, there's lots of moving parts to this whole conversation, and I'm super excited about the goal work you guys have landed on here in the strategic plan, because I think it is going to make a difference over the next few years, so.
One thing I'll just add to that, so, ESSA is coming about, I listened to Ryan Wise, the director of the Iowa Department of Education, give a presentation last week in Iowa City, and so, September 18th, I believe, is when they formally have to present the Iowa plan for ESSA to the feds, and that will address the testing for the Iowa Core and see if the feds approve that. So, we actually have an invitation out to Director Wise to come and speak before the board here in the next couple of months to give us an update on what we're looking at to match that with the Iowa Core, so.
John, you want to, you want to explain what ESSA is for the general?
I'll let you, you're much more updated, or Brad? I'll let you, you're much more updated, or Brad? ESSA?
It's the new, it's a new version of No Child Left Behind, which I think most people in public are aware of. It's the Federal Education Act. This is the new authorization of that, and it's every, every child-
Every student succeeds.
Every student succeeds.
Yep.
And it, in this new change, it allows the state to have more control over standards as does the locals, should also have the local assessment groups.
Thank you. Keith, you have a comment?
I do, and I'd like to see the data with the students that have been in the district three years, so we can look at that and say, "The students that we've had here, this is the job we're doing with them." And, because that, to me, that's really important, that if the students come, they're getting good education. Another thing I'd like to see is, I agree with not one test on that at all, but how are we doing on criterion-based tests, you know, and what our students are really learning? Because it's all about the students and what they're learning. So, as much emphasis as we can give to that and to the community, if you bring our children here, they work, they do it, this is the road to success.
And that's the, that's the criterion-based is the proxy measure we have right now for our district assessments are our criterion-based assessments, because they are matched to the criteria in the Iowa Core. So, to the extent that we get better at using our data and improving our data system to infuse those into the conversation, we'll have a lot better sense of where we are from a criterion-based perspective. And then, student longevity data, that's a great question, we can dig into that some more.
Other remarks, questions?
I was just thinking from a remark perspective, I mean, as a parent, you look at the Iowa assessments and, okay, where's my child? How are they performing? What do they need to do going forward? What do I need to do? And, you know, from communication that, you know, we would get, say, from a building or from the district, or from the state, or media, you know, at one point, there was a smarter, balanced assessments that came up as a discussion, and it's like, ultimately, it's an assessment, and while this data isn't quite, I think, what we all would want to see, you know, it's telling in that it kind of shows where we need to go and what we need to do. I guess with smarter, balanced, we're kind of waiting on the state to kind of see what happens, right?
So, the state put out an RFP for the new state assessment, and so, they don't have the results of that back yet. I won't say anymore. Yeah, we're waiting, we're waiting on those.
Other questions or comments? Gary?
Thank you, Dr. Buck, for bringing up the deficiency as in our current, I'm typically the one that will attack, that has been a thorn in my side for a number, number of years. But, how about our FAST assessment? Are we using that to assess, if I'm got that straight, for assess our reading proficiency with that? What kind of data do we have a handle on that? That would be something that I think might be more aligned, and it may be something that, you know, you're not ready or don't have this evening, but-
And I do not have the FAST data with me, but FAST is a screening assessment that we give three times a year, and so, what that tells us is, if a student comes up as red or on that assessment, then we've articulated what diagnostic assessments that we want that student to experience after that, which allows us to pinpoint what area we need to supplement or support for instruction. So, is it a phonics deficit? What's a deficit that, or area that we really need to focus on? And then, that assessment is given, so it's given in the fall, the winter, and the spring. I'm not sure the screening window just may have opened, or will be opening here shortly for fall.
I give you a thumbnail on the data.
Right, and again, that would be over a year. I think it would be at least some good information, those that we've identified in the red in the fall, are they moving to the green by the end of the year, and how many, and so, that would be, could be a good indication, a better indication right now of how we're doing with some of our reading programs.
In the APR, we do set a goal on FAST data for, for our, for our students as well, so.
Yeah, do the thumbnail.
So, the quick thumbnail of FAST, and I don't know the percentages off the top of my head, and many in this room that are looking at me saying, "Well, you just make something up," and there'll be plus five or so percent, plus or minus. The gist of the story, though, is the state trend has been improving, our trend has not been improving, and the state trend of kids who make progress from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, we are not holding serve relative to the state on kids making progress from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. So, the reality, and it's very uneven. So, if you are familiar with our system at all, you would recognize there's unevenness in our system by school, by grade level. So, when I'm saying this, this is a generality, which is not exactly for correct, depending on which grade level you choose in which school. But, if you look at our data in the aggregate, our FAST data in the aggregate, it is not growing like the state growth, data is growing, and we are not seeing the growth from the beginning of the year to the end of the year that's being seen statewide.
Well, we're being transparent, and I truly appreciate that, and as a board, it's our job to continue to review this, look at this, and hold people accountable to trying to move forward as best we can, and provide resources that will allow it to.
Which will be part of our next agenda discussion, so. Anything else on all of this? Thank you so much, we appreciate the information and data, and we'll keep pushing on this to improve. Thank you.
And if I need to correct those remarks later, I just told, just told one little bit of, yeah, and, because Val, if she was here, she'd probably be looking at me saying, she'd probably refine my answer.
What is he talking about? We'll give you a little bit of a grace on that one, so.
All right. Thank you very much. Next, we want to just talk a little bit about the board goals. We had, we had a chance at the last board meeting to do a work session and really dive in with the Cabinet and Dr. Buck about some of those areas that the district is working on, and how can the, how can the board support that? And one of the things that I heard out of that, that we were fully supportive of the goals, tactics, values of this district strategic plan. So, in collaboration with Dr. Buck and the administration, we came up with that statement, number one, that the board fully supports and will continue to advocate for the values, goals, and tactics in the district strategic plan, da-da-da-da-da. And then, we also talked about, how can we show that as a, as a board, we have these overarching, we're sort of that lighthouse board that is really working towards best practices as a, as a school board, and of course, there are great resources, Keith knows being on the Iowa School Boards Association Central Board, that they've got great resources. So, I did a little bit of digging, and sure enough, they have, I think, what is it, six different primary areas that a board really should be focused on, and so, that's, that's where I pulled that from, I think in my email, I gave you the link, so you can actually go back. A few of you have given me a little bit of tweaks, for instance, in Roman numeral four, foster a district culture that enables excellence and innovation, talked about collaboration, working with the, working with the employees, and kind of came to, I think, a compromise on expects a continuation of a collaborative environment with an emphasis on employee engagement, designed to promote the recruitment and retention of a highly qualified workforce or staff. So, that was one example. So, this, this isn't the end-all, be-all. It could be, we could all say, this is, this is exactly how we want it. There's no vote on these goals from Laurel, talking back years, we typically haven't voted on this, but we do come to an agreement as a board, so there's still time to tweak this, and I, like Mary had said, you know, it's sort of a living document, and I think that's sort of the, the discussion that we had about the district strategic plan. It's, it's there that, you know, as things change, at least annually, we'll look at it, and possibly even in between, add to it. You'll see there's some little blanks in that. So, I just want to open this up, our board priorities, this at least draft of it, and see if there are comments, questions, if it's more than we've had in the past, is it too much? Is it hitting the target of what we should be focused on as a board? Is there something missing? So, we'll just open it up to all of you. Yeah, Keith?
The Iowa Association of School Boards takes each item and relates it to an item on the agenda, and so, that, and maybe it's two or three items that's on that agenda from these board goals. So, you know, as we sit there as a board and the community, this is what we'd say we would do, and this is what we're doing at the meetings. This worked very well.
So, this is how the Iowa Association of School Boards meetings, when they meet, they relate it back to these-
They relate it to item, you know, on the agenda of their goals.
Right, and I think on our, on our board agendas, don't we-
Well, I was just looking through that, and we do, but we need-
But, we need to, I mean, if, if these are our goals, what you're saying is, let's tie them back. How do our discussion items relate specifically back to these plans or goals?
Yes, and they've been doing that for about the last two years, and, you know, it's worked out well, so that, you know, why are you doing this? Well, these are our goals.
We've done that for a number of years as well. I think it was the last year or two, we've tied it to the Theory of Action, which was the, before the strategic plan was in place, and so, now going forward, once we have this in place, we've actually tied it back to the district strategic plan rather than the board goals, so that's, that's what we were doing.
So, we could look at, I mean, the district goals, or the board goals priorities are in line with the district strategic plan, so we could actually cross, sort of tab those potentially.
Sure.
Other, Gary?
I think you alluded to it, but I, I think the idea of having the priorities with flexibility as we move through any year, there are things that are unforeseen, or things that come up that did not anticipate, and so, even though it may not be on this document as a priority, it might be something, I would hate to restrict it from, from approaching the topic because it wasn't one of our priorities.
I think that these, these topics, based on the Iowa School Boards Association list, are pretty all-encompassing, so most things that the board should be dealing with, I'm guessing, could fit underneath somewhere in these, and hopefully tie back to the district goals as well, so.
Well, and I think it's, it's good that we have something in writing in that we have a check-in balance, that we check in, not like a year from now, but to really stay on top of this, to make sure we are doing what we say that we want to do.
I had, I had heard one comment from a board member about really wanting to make sure that we keep on top of the goal of a diverse workforce, and, and that, that is spelled out really clearly in the district strategic plan, and so, I think as a board with that item number one, that's the top thing, that we're holding the system, holding the Cabinet, Dr. Buck accountable for working on and meeting these strategic plan goals and priorities. I think, I don't know if you have any comments, Dr. Buck, but that's kind, that was kind of the tie-in on that.
Absolutely.
The other, the other key thing was just that whole fiduciary aspect of it, and I appreciate Steve Graham helped provide, number in Roman numeral six, sustain and enhance district resources through continuous planning and fiduciary oversight, and all of us understand our, our role in helping make sure there's enough resources to get done what we need to get done, and be transparent, and do it in a legal and forward way, and my understanding of reading Steve's comment is, it won't be very long, and September 15th, I guess, and we'll get some figures for the, to close out fiscal year 2017, so we'll know then, and that's part of that living document, we can adjust this a little bit to have those final numbers.
Sorry, real quick, at our next board meeting, there'll be a full update on the district's financial position for fiscal '17. It'll be official, and we'll show you our unspent balance, our cash balances, and the general fund, we'll talk about all the funds, so you'll get that full report then.
Okay, all right, well, I appreciate having that level of detail in there, because I know that's of prime importance to all of us, so. Any other comments or questions?
When do we certify enrollment, or when do we do the count?
Certified enroll, October 1st, so on the date, and then we, it is certified the 15th. So, data is pulled from Power School on enrollment on the 1st, and due to the state on the 15th.
Thank you.
Our team gave up a couple of weeks of their life trying to make sure that all ends up as accurate as possible.
That's awesome. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing, seeing none, we'll, we'll tweak the spending authority once we know that after next week, but otherwise, I'm not making any edits to this, we're not voting on this, so, you know, unless, unless I hear from you at this point that there's any major concerns right now, this is what we will move forward with and actually publish, so.
Can I just add one more thing? So, I just, I would just like to publicly thank this board. So, if you think back, so how we arrive at this document, this is a really exciting, thoughtful document that has at least a couple-year history of, we've built capacity via community input on a theory of action, we've worked to put together a high-quality five-year strategic plan with, that threads in board expectations around innovation and an improved use of data, and most importantly, meeting the learning needs of all kids, and when we say meeting the learning needs of all students, we're talking about not only academics, but socio-emotional behavior needs of kids. So, I, I have to tell you, and this is just, I have goosebumps about the importance of the document that we have in front of us tonight, and what the role of the board is in providing leadership in partnership with the superintendent and others, backed by a five-year plan that I feel really great about. So, thank you for your leadership in getting us to this point, it's incredibly important, and just in the last week or so, we've been on two different calls, working with groups that are really good at supporting you. One in research and data, and the example we saw today is coaching and guidance on building a high-quality diversity plan, and the group we talked about with last week was, they're doing amazing front-edge work on the future-ready learning student work and the profile of a graduate, et cetera. It's really exciting to be engaged in those conversations and know exactly why they would be a good partner to us, because it's clear what we're trying to accomplish here and what the expectations of this board are. So, the level of clarity that, that permeates this whole thing is very much appreciated and more likely to lead to the improved outcomes we all want, so, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Buck, and your cabinet as well, you guys are terrific to work with. With that, we're at the end of our meeting, so I encourage you to fill out your board notes and take your calendar with you, and with that, we're adjourned.
What questions tomorrow?
Oh, yes.
There's also another quid item on our, on the ballot, so I encourage people to take advantage of your opportunity to vote and elect some very important people to our board.
Thank you for that reminder, appreciate it. With that, we're adjourned, so, thank you.